Welcome, Deb. Can you hear us? Good evening, Deb. Can you hear us? I'll put it over to the side. That was really loud, but I moved it off to the side now. Hey, Deb. I'm just trying to test to see if you can hear us. If you can, can you unmute? Just say hi so we can see if our technology is working before the meeting starts.
Okay, welcome, everyone. We will call to order our committee of the whole meeting and start by recognizing and acknowledging that we work, live, and play on the city of Port Alberni, which is situated on the unceded traditional territories of the Sichot and Hoopacessit First Nations. We do have an agenda in front of us. Are there any late items to add from committee members? Counselor Solder.
Just a notice of motion to recommend, a recommendation to the next council meeting regarding budget presentation.
Great. We will add that under new business. Any other late items? Seeing none, any late items from our corporate officer?
No late items. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Would somebody like to move approval of our agenda with the additional item? Moved by Counselor Patola, seconded by Counselor Douglas. On the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And on to adoption of minutes, we have minutes from the meeting held at 6:00 PM on March 4th as presented. Moved to adopt by Counselor Solder, seconded by Counselor Dame. Any comments on the minutes? Seeing none. On the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. We will move on to public input period. This is an opportunity for the public to address the committee. A maximum of six speakers for up to five minutes each can be accommodated. And for those participating electronically, please ensure that you use the raise your hand feature, and you'll be called on to speak in the order which you appear. And I neglected to note that we do have Counselor Haggard online, and so hopefully she's able to unmute herself and participate as needed as well. And Counselor Haggard, I can see you on the Zoom, or your letters on Zoom, so if you want to use the raise your hand feature as well. Hello, Counselor Haggard. That will work, so feel free to use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you. Okay, are there members of the public who would like to speak today at public input? Come on forward. And when you get to the microphone, just hit the button to turn it on, and then if you could just introduce yourself, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Matthew. I'm actually not from here. I've lived here about two years. I guess I have a question, and I'm just wondering what the city is doing about building more affordable rental units, because I don't see a lot of that.
Thank you. Great question. We are actually working with a number of organizations who are building affordable rentals. And largely, those are with BC Housing, so different organizations in the community that are spearheading that, and we are supporting those projects sometimes through the donation of land. We also have a development cost charge reduction bylaw, which just brings down the overall cost of those buildings. And recently, it was actually announced that we are, we're kind of in the shortlisted planning stage for the BC Builds Program, which was just announced by the provincial government as well, which is really intended to be middle-income housing, so not necessarily the lowest end of affordable, but kind of that next stage up for families and individuals who still need reasonably affordable housing in the community and are struggling to find that. So that potential partnership is with Sichot First Nations, and others have been with organizations like Rainbow Gardens, the Low Energy Housing Society, so many others that I can't think of off the top of my mind right now. But there have been several projects come to the community that are designated affordable housing units. And then additional to that, we've obviously seen a pretty significant increase in the number of apartment-style units in the community that aren't necessarily deemed affordable, but certainly are helping to take the pressure off of just the general rental market and the supply and demand issue that we're having right now that's leading to some really unaffordable prices. So not necessarily one quick answer or solution, but certainly it's something that's been top of mind and an area of focus for us. Thanks for the question. Any other questions or comments? Joseph?
Hi, my name is Joseph, and I live here in Port Alberni. I wasn't going to say anything because it's really not that important, but I thought, why not? There's nobody else getting up. So I'm just, it's a question, but I don't really want to ask, because question period is supposed to be at the end, right? I was going to ask if anybody actually walks in the Roger Creek Trail down by Roger Creek in and out of there, if any of you have actually been on that trail. And if you have off of Tebow, it's kind of steep coming down there and rather loose rock. Makes it hard for some people to go up and down that one, so try it sometime. And then the fairgrounds, also coming in the fairgrounds, rather a steep trail coming down from the fairgrounds. There's two trails that come out of the fairgrounds, and a third one, which is now on 8th Avenue, I believe, at the end of 8th. All very steep and makes it limited, very beautiful down, and I think it's a great asset to the community that we have such a beautiful spot. I'm down there quite often. But those trails, 8th Avenue, the two that come in off the fairgrounds and the one off Tebow, if you have any limited mobility or issues with knees, whatever, those aren't easy. And now that they've put the connector down onto Roger Creek itself, much more easily accessible, but not as accessible as it could be. They've got a temporary trail built in there currently that goes by the trestles. I don't know if you've all been in that yet or not and checked it out. It's a temporary. There's supposed to be a permanent trail going in there that'll hopefully make it easier access for people that do have issues with mobility. And so, but I did talk to somebody who was working on the temporary section of the trail before the permanent, and almost indicated to me that this temporary may be permanent. So I thought, okay, that doesn't sound great, and I know there's a lot of expense being spelt to other places. I would just encourage the city to look at making that permanent trail that's supposed to go in a priority so that it does make it easy accessible for other people that do have issues and that with getting it on. It's a beautiful spot, and it should be available to the majority of the public, not just a few that can kind of navigate the way it's currently set up. So that's the only comment I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Joseph, and I'll just echo your comments around the kind of previous access points to that trail being very challenging. Certainly, if you have accessibility or mobility issues, but also with children, it was just almost an impossible trail to get into. So that was a priority area for the connector piece that was put in. And Mike, maybe you could just speak to, because there hasn't been any changes to funding or anything like that. So imagine the temporary trail is still temporary, and although somewhat of a challenging spot, accessibility has been taken into consideration as much as possible on that. Mike?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Yeah, we will be making that temporary entrance into the park permanent. We have to wait till the fish window this year to do some work on the lower stability of the slope. Once the slope is stable, then we can move ahead with the permanent fixture. But right now, we can't put something in there that's oversized. It would maybe compromise the slope there. So we don't want to do that at this time.
Thank you. And such a beautiful area of trail for anyone who hasn't had the ability to go down there. Definitely worth checking out. Are there any other members of the public? Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Now that you're talking about the parks, I walk my dog along with quite a few other people at Dry Creek Park, and that's right next to, off, I guess, 4th and behind the Friendship Center. And that is one of the nicest areas we have in Port Alberni with a bad reputation for people with drug and alcohol problems, unfortunately. But that has got better, and I want to give a shout out to the Frisbee Association and encourage the councillors of the city to do a little bit more to help them. I've noticed since they started about a, well, they started a few years ago, but more recently, they've been trying to clean it up. But it's a hard job with all the logs that were cut down by the city and never taken away and other issues. There's more and more people using that, and I talked to them, and they all have nothing but positive things to say about it. And you were talking about additions to the city that would encourage people to want to be here. They say it's a good course. It needs to be developed, and I just want to encourage the city to. I would imagine some of you haven't even walked down there. A lot of people that's lived in the city for a long time aren't aware of the fact that it's around the river there, and it was, I don't want to see it overdeveloped, but it's certainly a nice, a nice park in the city, right in the center. And I would like to see the city help the association to do a little more to develop it because there's a lot of interest in that Frisbee Golf down there, and it's getting bigger. Thank you.
Thank you. Agree. It's definitely, the Frisbee Golf Society has done a great job with support from Parks and Rec as well. And it's another beautiful trail asset that exists that could be further developed. So I think we haven't put any funding into that other than just operational support recently, but definitely a future kind of consideration for expanding that trail network. Any other members of the public who would like to speak today? Okay, and not seeing anyone online, we will move on to our delegation today, which is the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society and the Alberni Pacific Railway. Come on forward.
Good afternoon. Ron Corbile. I live at 2406 6th Avenue. So I guess it was approximately two months ago that we were at a COW meeting, and there were a number of motions and a few things that we were supposed to look at, and I'm just going to give a bit of an update on some of the things we've been working on. Out at the McLean's Mill, I think we were asked to put together a budget on what it would cost in order to get the old-time steam logging show up and running. So far, I don't think anything has cost any money. We had a volunteer go up the spar tree, inspect it, and found it to be in good condition. We've got, I think we have a contractor that's willing to donate some time to put in dead men. For you who don't know what a dead man is, it's when the guy line stumps are too rotten that you have to anchor something into the ground. There could be a cost maybe for material there, and I know the guys have found a couple more guy lines that we can use to replace the stumps that are rotten. We're going to be looking at inspecting the steam donkey in the next few weeks probably, and that will come at a cost. And we're hoping, and we're planning on having some sort of event at Father's Day. And we don't think we'll have the logging show up and running, but we hope to have the steam tractor up and running. And I guess overall, we're sort of waiting on the outcome of negotiations with Mosaic. That was one of the things the city was going to look at doing. I don't know where that's at, but it's really almost a showstopper. I think you'll remember in the past when Mosaic required insurance. They wanted five different types of insurances, and that would have just been totally out of our ballpark. And I know the city was looking at how maybe we could piggyback on their insurance as well. At the Industrial Heritage Center, we've applied for five grants so far this year. We've been successful on one. We're hoping to hear back on a couple more. We've applied for summer students. We've applied to the Community Foundation to improve the washrooms. I don't think they've been updated since that was built back in the early '60s. And also, we're hoping to get some funding to improve the entranceway up at the Heritage Center as well as the roundhouse. And the Ice Tea Grant, and I know some of the stuff we talked about at the last meeting was contingent on being successful. And we were successful on achieving the funding, and I really want to give a public acknowledgement to the folks that were on our group. The Heritage Society maybe spearheaded this, but this was truly a community endeavor. And the folks that were on it, the city was one of the participants, the Island Corridor Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, Vancouver Island Tourism, the Sichot First Nation, the SAN Group, the Port Alberni Port Authority, Hoopacessit First Nation, Alberni Clay Quot Regional District, Paper Excellence, and I'm sure I'm missing a few others. But we worked well together, developed requests for proposal, and that'll probably be going out either today or tomorrow to hire a contractor or consultant to look at our needs. And we're going to do a press release in conjunction with Ice Tea probably later this week. But I can tell you sort of a high level what our project deliverables are, and it's to figure out the economic viability and potential, what financial projections we could look at, some do market analysis, operational plans, what are best practices for heritage railways, a funding plan that includes potential funding sources, marketing strategy, an acknowledgement of the First Nations, their culture, their history, and address any infrastructure needs that we need for the railway. So I think if this package comes to fruition, we'll have a really good idea going into next year, what the, not only the railway, but what McLean's Mill can offer this community. And lastly, the railway, we've been working in conjunction with Technical Safety BC, and it's been going really well. It's, you know, it took far too long for us to be able to communicate with them. We're very close to having our safety management system developed, and they're coming over, as a matter of fact, tomorrow for a meeting here in Port Alberni, and I guess Jennifer will also be at that meeting. And maybe I'll turn it over to Richard to give us a bit more information on the railway, and Richard will be at that meeting. Unfortunately, I have a prior commitment. Richard?
Yeah, so Ron stole one of my bullet points there, but I'll just sort of echo what he said. So thanks to council's direction and staff's assistance, we have had several meetings now with Technical Safety. Being able to contact them is very helpful, and we're well along the way with developing the safety management system and completing the final steps with TSBC in person tomorrow at the APR Roundhouse. On the railway regulatory side of things, completing the SMS was one of the final pieces to satisfy Technical Safety so the APR can return to doing maintenance, training, and operations. A few of those other items that were on the list, to be able to get to that point, was to do a track inspection, which we've done multiple, get our crew qualified, and yeah, our crew qualified, I think that was it. I did two of the same bullet points here, but. I did two of the same bullet points here, but those were done at the IHS's expense for our contribution. So that sort of wraps up the technical safety side. So at the last council meeting that we were here, the council asked us to prepare another budget, a lower cost, more community focused budget for the railway. So we were able to do that, and the budget, I believe, I did send the budget to you, right, Mike? Yes, I did. So the budget for operations, we've got it down to $60,000. Forty thousand of that is insurance. Now, a very high number for insurance, of course. Now, we're unsure if now these negotiations with the city, we're working on the agreements for the Roundhouse and Industrial Heritage Center. Those might be able, and falling under MIABC, might be able to bring that insurance cost down, which would bring that $60,000 for operating down. We're still trying to figure out with staff what that looks like. So at this point, we're just waiting on the agreements for the Roundhouse specifically to be done so we can, city staff can look at the insurance with MIABC. So for that $60,000, what would that look like? We've been able to, looking at community focus, being able to bring the ticket prices down to an average of $6, so $7 for an adult for the same trip that you would have been getting in the last plan. So right along the waterfront from APD to Stamp Avenue. The speeder would operate on a volunteer basis, approximately one day a week, not only during summer months. So that could operate all year, depending on the volunteers and how we're doing with ticket sales, all dependent on what all that looks. But for the diesel operation, which is actually, after crunching the numbers, not much more in expenses than the speeder operation, would operate during the summer only, three days a week, and then as well for events. So for events during the summer, we'll be doing, we would do the Canada Day train. I believe the city is looking at putting on some type of Canada Day event, so it would be great to be able to add that to the event, again, at the low $6 ticket prices. Also, August Long Weekend Express, a Labor Day train, because we know we've got a lot of stuff that goes on Labor Day weekend in Portal Burnie, and as well the Santa train, which would run for two weekends, which is sort of a community favorite around here. And there's a possibility of so much more based on the amount of volunteers, both time and resources we have, which could be more stuff with the speeder. It could be handcar rides, shop tours, et cetera. So like I said, the run would be from APD Sawmill to Stamp Avenue, right along the waterfront there. I'll touch on that point. And we'd also be hosting our own events throughout the year to try to bring up those ticket sales, to bring up those numbers. We're working on building up the Roundhouse, the APR Roundhouse. Last year, we got, I think I touched on that at the last meeting, last year we got the property cleared of much of the Blackberries and got some gravel down in the back, and we're working on displays on that property, so to try to expand the operations. As well as council asked last time, is there a possibility to rent the train? So I did some rough numbers on what that would look like. So there is the possibility of being able to rent the train there as well. So that's sort of the basic outline of what the operations would look like for that money. Of course, there is still the crossings that need to be done before anything moves past Athol Railway Crossing, which is the crossing right outside of Taiyi Landing. So yeah, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much to both of you, and thanks to IHS for the work that's been done on this. This is, that is a lot of progress. Really happy to hear about the progress that's been made with Technical Safety BC and kind of a smaller starter point, community focused train. I think that could offer a huge amount of value to community residents and families in the city. So really exciting. I just want to ask our CAO before I go to other questions for an update, or if there is any update on the issue on insurance, or sorry, with Mosaic and insurance, sorry, Mosaic, not insurance, Mosaic. And then on insurance, are we exploring or do we have a way potentially to help with offsetting that, what sounds like an insane insurance cost in relation to the budget? Or is that already us trying to utilize our connections?
I did look into today the agreement that we've almost got ready to share with IHS on the Roundhouse, the track, the short track there. And hopefully, we'll have something to them in the next week or so. And then from there, we'll have to ship it off to MIABC to see what the insurance would cost through MIABC. For out at McLean Mill and the Steam Donkey, I know that Mosaic has had meetings with our staff, but again, an agreement is needed. So, and I didn't look that up today to see how far along that agreement is. So I don't have the full details on that one, but I can look it up and get back to council.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Councilor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much to the IHS for coming today. Appreciate the update. It's very positive. You guys have done a lot of great work in such a short period of time, and we really appreciate, I really appreciate that, sorry. Can't speak on behalf of council, apologize. But I look forward to seeing the next update and seeing if we can move forward with having some trains this year. That'd be really nice. And I appreciate the budget you've come with and trying to knock it down as much as possible and still having a viable train operation in this community. I did have a question to staff. I did ask the last meeting if the, we're looking at updating, or sorry, doing work to the two crossings. And I was, I did ask at the last meeting, but I wasn't sure if the answer is readily available today, if those funds would be able to come out of the growing community fund merely because it is for infrastructure. So through you, Madam Mayor, to staff, if I could get an answer?
CAO?
Thanks through the chair. Thanks for the question. Yes, the community grants would be, but also the gas tax would be available. We are being told that there is a new gas tax program. So as soon as we have that finalized, we could also look at using the gas tax program for that. So as we move forward with this budget, we wouldn't have to make an amendment right now. We could make an amendment at the beginning of the year if council decided to, once we have everything in place, and we could use the gas tax from the new allocation or change some of the allocation that we have in the financial plan currently.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you through you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Fox. Appreciate that update and appreciate staff looking at other options as well. So thank you very much for your hard work.
Other comments? Okay. I'm wondering if we don't have the budget package that was sent from IHS in our packages, unless it came in an email, but I didn't see it come.
Through the chair, I just received it today. So again, I can get it out to council or bring it to another meeting for information. But I might have an update too from Parks, Recreation and Heritage to bring back to council.
Great. So I was just going to suggest that that come on our next council agenda with any relevant information from staff as well, in case there is a desire to make changes to this year's budget based on this information. Okay? Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much to the IHS for coming and again, for all the work that's been done. Okay, then we'll move on to unfinished business. Item number one, 2024 to 2028 financial plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So today, we're bringing forward just a few updates for the committee to consider. Some of the direction that was provided at our last council meeting considered the non-market change for both the residential and also for our light industrial and business classes. So within the report, I'll review that. But just noting that with all the allocations that we've made and the changes, we did, we did try to await the confirmation from UBCM for the power of the Public Works Boiler. That was confirmed on Friday that we can proceed with that through gas tax. So the financial plan anticipated that, as you see the capital plan as it's displayed today in the agenda. That's how it's set out as far as utilization of that. With all the other changes and the allocations to the other reserves, which I'll discuss, actually I have a PowerPoint here just to clarify the funds that are going to the Alberni Valley Community Forest Reserve utilization. But with that, we'll update the financial plan with our actuals, because we are still working through our year end and finalizing the numbers. So that'll be updated at the next regular council meeting as far as our year end numbers. So we're getting closer to finalization of that. The remaining funds that we had in gas tax after all the allocation, you'll see in 2025 is going to the Argyle Street CSO project. So that's for streetscape or storm work that we would be identifying with that project. And the reason why it's allocated is because in the current agreement with UBCM, we have to allocate all the funds as of March 31st this year. So when I report to the allocations, every single dollar has to be allocated. So you'll see that 356,000 that's allocated in 2025, but we could utilize that for other projects if we make amendments after we adopt the financial plan. So just wanted to confirm that with the committee, and that's the recommendation with the remaining funds for the gas tax. Also, we've adjusted the growing communities fund to utilize 1.56 million more than we originally had in the draft. So that is now allocated on the projects that were provided to staff in the recommendations. That is now sitting there. And as we look at the financial plan, the impact on the single family residential home is now within the package that the committee is seeing today. And with that, we did discuss that at our last council meeting, but with all the changes, it's 9.74 as it sits today. So that's the average single family residential home. And that's the number that we usually send out our messaging to the public, and that would continue with this year. So obviously, we started at 16.86. That is never the final number, and the non-market change in the residential class accounted for 1.87% of that, because we were sitting at 11.61 when we discussed it at the regular council meeting, and then it's sitting at 9.74 as we speak now. With the resolution to take the non-market change within the light industrial class and the business class, that accounts for about $240,000 of non-market change that would be going into the asset management reserve with the resolution from council at the last meeting. So as it sits today, the increase year over year is 12.48. But obviously, with the different allocations, and there's also a consideration to continue the delinking of major industry and light industry, and having that spread at a 20 cent per thousand rate so that we continue that commitment that we made to light industry. Historically, we've had a light industry and a major industry rate that was very similar, but in 2021, that was delinked by about 20 cents per thousand. So if we consider that, that's about $100,000 more that we could use to dilute the residential class, and that could bring it down to, it was 9.16 if we want to seek that today as a recommendation. And this is not a recommendation that would impact the financial plan. This is a recommendation that would impact the tax rate by law. So also within the report, and I do have a PowerPoint that I wanted to add to because I know Counselor Sola did ask a question, and when I was going through review, I failed to include that in the agenda, so I wanted to make sure I catch that today. And this is having to do with the SOMA site. So within the staff report, we can see that there's three components of the SOMA property. And one is the redip grant. That was for the site remediation that we had undertook. That project still has some funding, obviously, $1 million from the provincial government and also our contribution from the land sale fund. That was 321, 120, that was the amount that we identified in the grant. And then we have a current spend of about 438. So with that, that account, that component of the spending, I should say, has about $900,000 remaining. But when we look up on the screen, this is a request from Counselor Sola, just on the total spend, just to have some clarity on where we are with all the spend on the SOMA. So when we purchased all the costs associated with the site, that was in total in our capital asset was 5.6 million. Then in 2022, we allocated $200,000 for just site management, insurance, any requirements for security, any other work that we'd be doing. And obviously, at that time when we set the budget, we didn't even have the property. We took possession February 14th, Valentine's Day in 2022. So when we set the plan up, we knew we were going to need some money to do some work. But with that, when we look at the overall expenditures, we were at 257, knowing that a lot of that had to do with some salvage work that we identified as we got into the year. So materials that were leaving the site, obviously, we had to secure those, and we had revenues of 182. So I just wanted to ensure that council, the committee, the public understand that that year, the net expenditure for the SOMA site was 75,000. So any remaining funds from that, because it was an operational project, went into the annual surplus. Now, if we look at the staff report, and I talked about the environmental component, that currently sits with 900,000 left in that budget. And a lot of that is that grant that we did receive for the cleanup work. The project of demolition, now that is something that honestly, I didn't think we'd be at this point. A lot of good work from our contractor and then our project manager over the past year to get a lot of those buildings down, but we're also receiving quite a bit of revenue for that. So the demolition works in 2023 for this project, and we are tracking this project separately now. So this will make up the actual cost of the site, and then we'll seek obviously recovery for that when we sell it to the developer. But you can see here that in the staff report, that we had about 658,000 was allocated in funding to this project. We also contributed that from the land sale reserve, but we received about three quarters of a million dollars in salvage revenue, just lumber, steel, selling of equipment, and total spend of about 888. So, you know, we have spent more than we received as far as the demolition costs, but I think, you know, when we look at what we thought that cost would be, we're doing far better than the anticipated result. And we do have a few more buildings to take down, and we're hoping to hit that break even. That's always our target as far as the remediation there for, or the, sorry, not the remediation, but the demolition. So within that component of the workings that we have down there, we have about a half a million dollars in funding left for that component. And just like we did in 2022, we had a component just for site works as far as security, any other maintenance that we need to undertake on that site that's outside, and we saw some funding left over. So remaining funds that we have earmarked for the project, within that, essentially the 2.2 million dollars that we have for the project, $1 million is coming from the grant, is about 1.5 funding left to complete the work. So we are moving on to additional remediation because the first stage is done, but we'll hope to update council and the committee on that as soon as we can. I just wanted to also look at the reserves, and I spoke to this when we talked about updating the numbers. So within the financial plan, the Alberni Valley Community Forest Reserve is utilizing some funds, and we originally had the Public Works Boiler in there. So just wanted to clarify with the committee that now it's only $321,000, you see 331, but that is the annual $10,000. And this year, you've already allocated that to the Marine Heritage Society for the update on the lighthouse down at the harbor. And with that, there was the dividend that was received in 2023, and the interest on that is all allocated in there, so that our balance was sitting at just over $900,000 for the year with the reserve. And these are the capital projects that are now identified from that reserve fund. So these are all the items that were in taxation, but now currently coming out of that reserve. And then finally, no, there's a couple things, sorry. The Paws Project. I think within the prior agenda that went to the committee whole and the council, there was there wasn't enough information, and I understand it was hard to make a decision on that. And and in in this agenda, we now have all the details on on the 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 projects that we've identified. And we don't need to make a recommendation right now for that. It doesn't doesn't matter. We were just looking to clean up some historic projects. So that's in there. We may seek an amendment to the financial plan in the future as we go through. But in 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 the essence of timing and ensuring that we meet the deadlines for approval of the financial plan, that can come afterwards because it is a non tax impact for two thousand and twenty four. So if there's any questions on that, staff can try to address those or bring back information. And then, as I noted, the reutilization of the the gas tax is now being done with the boiler for the public's workshop. And finally, in the report, there's a table that provides the breakdown of the tax share. With this, we'll we'll have a completed rule basis for this this allocation. At the end of March, we'll get the revised rules. That's all the appeals that the public might have, any adjustments on to the tax rule, any additions, deletions. Those are things that will have an impact, and it does does change slightly, but not generally, generally not too too significantly. So these allocations should should be similar when we have the revised rule. But we'll bring that when we bring the tax rate by law forward to council for consideration. So with that, I hand it over to the committee for any questions.
Thank you very much for all the information. Are there questions from counsel? Counsel Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to go back to the non market change and the amount that would contribute to the asset management reserve. So I was just trying to figure out the numbers here, and I'm looking at page ten on the agenda. There's the light and business class, non market change value to asset management reserve table at the bottom. And there's obviously, because of the previous motions, nothing under the residential class. Just I'm just wondering what that value would be under the residential class of table one if, in fact, the non market reserve was allocated to asset management, non market change was allocated to asset management reserve.
Madam Chair, I I did have that in the in the prior report. And off the top of my head, I'm thinking it was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was coming from the residential class if we kept the non market change separate and set the set the rates at that time. So but I I'd have to confirm, but I I believe that's what it was.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, round numbers are great. And again, knowing that the motion's already been passed with regards to non market reserve, non market change for the residential class. But the table that follows on table on page eleven indicates approximately the average taxation per property is two hundred, is two thousand five hundred and forty dollars and ninety cents. And if the non market change is allocated at one point eight seven percent, we're talking about forty seven dollars and fifty one cents per household. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, I I don't have that off the top of my head. Those are approximate numbers that I I didn't consider, obviously. So I
I'm not worried about bringing up the abacus right now. I'm just wanting to know in in numbers, well, we've talked a lot about, oh, it's a two percent difference and and how much of an impact that has on the citizens of of Port Alberni. So two percent, when it's compared to, you know, tax change of only of sixteen percent, two percent is a big chunk of that. But I'm thinking in real world dollars. I'm just wanting to know if my calculations are correct in the numbers I've looked at, because there are a lot of numbers and I can get confused, that at two thou- two thousand five hundred and forty dollars being the usual tax bill, one point and seven percent of that would be a difference of forty seven dollars. So what we're really talking about in the nature of the impact to all of the individuals out there that are suffering under the inflation rates of of that we're dealing with in this economy, we're talking about a difference of less than fifty dollars a year. I just wanted to be clear so we knew for future discussion, just like we have a a general number of what one percent of the budget is.
Counsel Sola.
Just to piggyback on Counselor Petola, but we look at the average house, that has to be on an average house. If your house is only, or if you're living in a condo or whatever, and it's worth three hundred thousand, it's not going to be as much. So when you have a value on 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 the same page that we were just talking about, page eleven, five hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and nine dollars is an average house in two thousand and twenty three. So what your taxes are and the difference, you, if your house is not worth that, you're not going to get a forty something dollar change. It might be twenty dollars or something like that, just to be clear for people out there.
Just to be clear, though, the increase is two hundred and twenty five dollars for the year. That's what we're looking at right now as it's currently proposed. So, you know, it is reasonably significant. The difference of fifty dollars is potentially only in reference to assigning non market change differently. So if we did not assign the non market change, then that difference would be roughly two hundred and seventy five dollars, two hundred and sixty five, somewhere in that range, not to be exact, but just for clarity, we're not talking about fifty dollars in the overall increase. Other comments? Okay. None? Andrew.
Madam Madam Chair, just for context, and and I think, yeah, I just did a quick calculation. It's approximately that that amount. So when we look looked at the numbers and we didn't, you know, obviously completed a role, we're doing this a little bit earlier than we normally do as far as releasing the impact on the single family residential home. But if we were at the sixteen point eight six percent, that'd be about a three hundred and fifty dollar increase for the average or the single family residential home, the average with that, with all the changes. And and obviously, even adjustments of non market change, that that does change it a little bit, so.
Thank you. I do have a a proposed motion here just around the delinking of the tax classes. And if there's no more discussion on on the report as it was, I think I'll make that that motion just so that it can go to council. So that is that the Committee of the Whole recommend that council continue to delink major industry class four and light industry class five and set an effective tax rate for light industry that is approximately twenty twenty per thousand lower than major industry, then rebalance the tax share to affect it, to lower the effective tax rate of residential class one. If there's a second, or thank you, seconded by Counsel Mealy. And if we go down to the next chart, table three, those are the numbers that would be represented as far as I'm reading it. So when we continue that practice of delinking, it basically, the numbers are chart three. Am I correct in assuming that, Andrew?
Ma- Madam Chair, you are correct. If if we we consider that and 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 use that delinking value towards the residential class.
Thank you. So it still, you know, it it doesn't make a a big, big difference. But this is the practice that we have been over the last few years, so just consistent with that. That will come to council for further discussion if it's passed today. And then, of course, we can continue to have the discussion when we set the tax rates during that by law process. But it at least will then lay it out that way, which gives benefit to the residential class for the growth that we're seeing in light industrial, basically. Are there questions around that, Counsel Petola?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wondering about the those magic numbers, how they compare five minutes ago before your motion was made, and to compare to five minutes from now, if your motion is carried, I'm just not sure. The delinking is is something that I certainly support. I'm just wondering, the number was two thousand per something, 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 and I wasn't quite sure what that meant.
It's the it's table two versus table three in our our report. So that's where I'm drawing my numbers from. Is that clear? Andrew, do you want to maybe just go over it a little bit further?
So, Madam Chair, and 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 to make it clear, because obviously, we don't have that that detail in here. But if we look at the financial plan and then the tax tax share that is at the very rear end of the of the financial plan, we, on the last page, we have a tax rate that currently is thirty six point nine six and and major industry is sixty one. And 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 if we have a rate of forty one in that range, that would be about a hundred thousand dollars. It would be shifted from light industry to to residential if this this recommendation moves forward. And and once again, we can consider this as we look at the tax rate by law allocation when we bring it forward at a future meeting. I think it's, I won't quote the date, but it's it's the first meeting in April. With that, that that that's the value that would be shifted. And and it still keeps that delinking that we we have been committed to since two thousand and twenty one, I believe. And then what we have up on the screen is currently that the table two is where we sit with the recommendations that have been made so far. And as I mentioned, these are the recommendations within the financial plan and then keeping the non market change with residential class and then having resident, the business class and and light industry, having the additional asset management contribution for two thousand and twenty four. The second table is if that hundred thousand essentially was in residential class and increased in light industry, I'm keeping that 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 rate de-linked with the twenty thou- twenty twenty cents per thousand. It would bring down the residential impact on the average single family residential home to nine point one six. So or two hundred and twelve, twelve for that property increase over over the prior years.
Thank you, Counsel Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I guess my question isn't so much the number itself, but with the phrase to continue continuation of the delinking of light industry. So what I'm not aware of, forgive my ignorance, is currently, light industry and major industry are de-linked, and we need to make a motion to continue that. So we're making a motion to continue status quo? Or are we making a modus motion to alter the previous situation by somehow increasing the share to light industry or major industry?
Andrew.
So historically, the major industry and light industry rates were virtually the same. But we've seen a change in the nature of the light industry, but understanding that's a growing component of the tax rule. The commitment back at that time to the light industry group was to keep that separate so that it wasn't that higher rate of major industry. So the recommendation that was being considered is is that if we do continue that, we keep it at approximately twenty per thousand separate. And that way, you don't have that higher tax that major industry has, but you still have that reflective light industry tax that's a little bit lower. So it 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 was just something that counsel of the day made a commitment to, just seeking the current council's direction as far as what we would like to do moving forward. It's a consideration. It's really up to the committee and council to to make a decision on that. So I hope that is.
But it is continuing status quo of what's been done the last few years. For a bit of additional information, on page forty eight of our agendas is where you can see a little bit more clearly the tax shares and the tax rates. And certainly, I think we could bring more information just in anticipation of the tax rate discussion because this is, I would say, like the most complicated part of the budget. Counsel Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess Director McGifford answered it quite clearly when he said the counsel of the day. So that that narrows my question, which is the counsel of the day last year, this counsel, did we do the same thing?
So we had, I think if you look at the column on on page forty eight, it's hard to see up there, but light industry was thirty five cents per thousand and major industry is fifty nine. So obviously, there is some changes that happen. There was probably more light industry by the time we made the final allocations and the recommendation came forward. But generally, we've been around that twenty approximately per thousand.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Is everyone clear on the motion, which is to continue doing what we've been doing? And that said, we will formalize in the tax rate discussions, but this will just set the charts as they're brought to us. Okay, seeing no more questions on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And Counsel Douglas, I do note that you've had questions and wanted to have a conversation around the heavy industry rate as well, and just wanted to note that that conversation still has time to take place when we get to the tax rate part of the discussion. Okay, any final questions on the budget presentations we have as for the budget package? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Andrew. We have no staff reports, no correspondence, so we'll move on to new business. And counsel, I just have a motion here that I'll read that the Committee of the Whole recommend that counsel direct staff to coordinate a two thousand and twenty four Canada Day family event in conjunction in conjunction with local groups and organizations, seconded by Counsel Sola. And this is really just because we haven't had, I think, an opportunity yet to, I know we're going to have another discussion about city led or group led events at a Committee of the Whole, but I would anticipate that won't happen immediately. And these types of events require time and planning, and I think none of us want to get to Canada Day again and go, why don't we have something happening? So this is really just to give enough time. This will again come to our council meeting for council to sign off on. But we'll give some time for staff to put something together. And hopefully, that is in partnership with a community group rather than just a full on city led event. But I think at the end of the day, we need to initiate something happening on Canada Day. And so this is just to direct that we start the planning on that. Counsel Petola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would this imply that there would be a report of some type coming from administration to council for final approval before the family day event goes forward? Just wondering because it's wonderfully open ended, and I wouldn't want to see staff spending the entire parks budget on a great Canada Day event as much as I would enjoy it.
Well, I would say it doesn't ask for a report. However, it also doesn't direct any change to the parks budget. So they would be operating within the existing budget that they have. That may be shifting some priorities from other events to a Canada Day event. I would imagine if there was going to be any major changes to what's already been presented, that staff would bring that back to us. But my thought is this would be generally just organize an event as as they do. And past Canada Day events that we've seen have been, I would say, not overly staff heavy. They've been in coordination with community groups, putting on, you know, face painting and activities at at the harbor key. So maybe something like that. And if it was going to be something major, I would ask that staff bring that back to us. And happy to have a an amendment to the motion if if we want to have a report come back.
No, I I don't think an amendment is needed. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just don't want to fall into the trap of suggesting to other people that, ah, it's easy, just do it. It'll be really easy. So I I want to be sensitive to the staff's obligations. But anyway, I've supported the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments, Counsel Sola?
And Madam Mayor, I don't know if I I need to do an amendment to your motion. I agree with your emotion, but there's a lot of grants available for Canada Day. And I would like to see if a society decides to take it on, staff help look for those grants and and help put them together. Some societies have issues doing that. So I I don't know if you need an amendment to that motion, or staff has got it.
I think you could just make a friendly amendment to add to the end of it and let staff seek any grants available.
And I'll second that. Thank you.
On the amendment, all in favor. Carried, I said friendly, but we voted. Any other comments on the Canada Day events? Okay, then on the motion as amended, all in favor. Carried, none opposed, thank you. And Counsel Sola, budget presentations.
Madam Mayor, I would like to recommend that to city council at the next city council meeting, a motion commencing two thousand and twenty five during budget presentation, we have department, departmental managers make their presentations to during tax time, budget time. Thank you.
Thank you, seconded by Counsel Mealy. Any comments? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed, thank you. Okay, and Okay, and question period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of the committee. For those participating electronically, please use the raise your hand feature and you'll be called upon in which the order it appears. Any questions? Mr. Anderson.
Just a question and, and this is the ideal opportunity. The public has an opportunity to read what's on the current agenda and get up and make some comments prior to the discussion by the committee. And that can be helpful, there's no question about it. And then the committee will, in this case, it was the, the, the report by Andrew on the finances. Then we listen to the discussion by, by the, the committee, who is the council, city council. And you end up often making a, a motion, sending a motion to the, the, the city council meeting, and then the public can get up at the end and ask questions. So the question is, why couldn't, in a discussion such as this, I think it's a good example, can you not go to the public? So do the public have any input on, 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 on this report, whichever it may be? Give them an opportunity to feel that they're part of the decision-making. And I'm asking, my, my question would be, why? That seems to be a reasonable way of including the public in the decision-making. Why, now this, this goes to just not yourself, Mayor, but to the, the councils. Why wouldn't you consider doing something like that? It seems to me like a natural flow of events that it's inclusive of the public in the decision-making.
Thank you. I think we absolutely could consider that. It would just be a change to our bylaws or on a one-off basis, any member of council could make a motion to do that. I think that for Committee of the Holes, that's definitely a consideration that we could update our bylaws, so it's a good suggestion. Any other comments from council? So that would be something that any member of council could bring forward as, at a regular meeting of council, as a suggested amendment to the bylaw.
So we'll just have, we'll wait and see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who would like to ask a question? Charlene.
I was just wondering if anybody happened to watch the Campbell River City Council with the two doctors who talked about Bill 36 and how the healthcare industry is in chaos? Nobody, nobody watched it? Okay. Well, I was just, you know, hoping that maybe city council would get together with other city councils and try to, you know, try to deal with this dire strait situation. Oh, that's disappointing. Okay, well, on to another question. The GIS, the Geo Mapping Provincial Grant that was given $150,000 to, to people to put a Geo Mapping study for Port Alberni. And I was just wondering, are we, are these two people's salary going to be continuing, continuing in 2025? Are the taxpayers going to be having to pay their two salaries as well in the following year?
Thank you. I'll just go to our Director of Development Services for that.
So the, the grant funding that the city received for the complete communities, that's a, a project and it's not staff. We, there's city staff involved in it that just as part of our, our regular work schedule, but we've engaged a consulting firm to complete that work. Once that work is complete, then there's no more. And it's, we're using the grant funding, which was 100% grant funding, to undertake that work.
Okay, that was provincial grant.
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's what was the question. Okay, well, I guess the last comment I have is M. Goslin was correct when he spoke at the last COW meeting about once you put the 16.8% tax down to under 10%, that everybody would feel better. Okay, so I just had to put that in. All right, thank you very much. And, you know, you, you, you folk really are doing a great job and, you know, you're doing your best, I, I know. And I thank you for all the effort that you, that you did put in. So just, you know, it's not always negative, right?
Thank you, Charlene. Appreciate it. Are there other members of the public who would like to ask a question? Come on forward.
I should send an email instead of getting up here, I think. Just get answers from people and staff. Just curious, I was, mentioned something a while back at one of the meetings. It was regarding the timing of the traffic light on T-Bowl. It turns quite quickly. And as I said at that meeting, that if you have any sort of a disability walking soul, and I happen to be walking really, it was, and it changed as she was in the third lane. And I'm just curious, what the, what is the process of seeing that change? I know there hasn't been any. Is that something that gets looked at? I know highways is probably a big part of that. And I'm just curious what the process is of seeing changes on something like that.
Thanks for bringing that forward again, CEO.
Yeah, thanks for the question. We did bring it to the ministry's attention and they have their traffic engineers looking at it. They're supposed to be increasing it. So that was the last I heard of it and I believe that was very shortly after we talked. I think we met two days later. And again, I don't have the exact time frame on it, but it is a highways light function.
Thank you. Come on forward.
Actually, I have another question about wildlife safety concerns, because I noticed throughout town that a lot of people, what, they don't secure their garbage, the garbage is full. And I just really noticed it's been a big problem in this town. I'm just wondering what the city's going to do about that, because there's, it's a drought, looks probably most likely to be a drought this year. And then there's, most likely, there's not going to be enough bears for the bear, and the bears are going to be in town, so.
Yeah, thank you. We are and have been a part of the Bear Smart Communities program for quite a few years. That said, I, I know that in the last couple of years, conservation officers have come specifically to the regional district to talk about the number of bears increasing and just the, those interactions increasing. So it might be something that we have to put more attention to, either with the city or in collaboration possibly with the regional district as well. Because I think you're right, this is going to be a challenging year. All of our new garbage cans and compost bins do have, I believe all of them have the fully locking clips on them. So it used to be that only some of our garbage cans were bear smart or bear proof. Bear proof, not bear smart. Bear proof for smart bears. Were only bear proof if you requested that. And when we switched a couple of years ago to our compost system, all of the new bins came with the fully locking clip. So that is a significant step toward people being able to secure their garbage, but a lot of it is, is people's behavior and certainly some more education could go out. Mike, did you want to add anything to that?
I'd like just to put a shout to the Gleaners program. It, it's a program where they hire a couple of students that organize events to pick fruit. A certain amount of the fruit goes to the, the different donations to food hampers and the such. And then everybody that picks the fruit also gets to keep a little bit. So it's, it's a great one. I went out, I think to, I think 15 or 20 last year. It's a great community time and they usually bring ladders and they help dispose of the waste that are attractants to animals. And they also take anything that is on the ground, they take it to hog farms or pig farms and reuse it for feed for animals. So that's another thing that is prominent in the community that really helps deter the wildlife from coming into town.
Yeah, and lastly, maybe we could just invite conservation to come and make a presentation to council as well in the near future. They have in the past, but it's been a few years and they think they've focused their attention at the regional district and presentations lately. So maybe even just for some messaging to members of the community of what they could be doing. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from members of the community? Seeing none, would somebody like to move adjournment? Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame on the motion, all in favor. Carried, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for joining.